Is our Zoom do door open? Okay. Great. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larksboro City Council on Wednesday, March 19th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Tonight, we have a pretty lighter agenda with some really important things and then a closed session, and then we'll be coming back after that. So, Alison, may I have a roll call, please?
I'm working up.
I am here.
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 Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Whit.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance, if you can, please stand and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to item number two, which is public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the community to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. If you're interested in making a public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please come forward to the podium and the microphone. And introduce yourself. Thank you. Is the microphone on?
It's supposed to be on. Hello, I'm David Mahler. I live here in Larksboro. And I want to comment on an item that some of you may be aware of and some not. But I've been closely following a bill that is winding its way through the California Assembly right now, AB 306, which would basically freeze any changes to building codes in California starting June 1st of this year through June 1st, '31. It's a six-year freeze. And if you haven't heard about this, it's worth knowing about. And at first glance, it's sort of alarming because it would seem to potentially freeze implementation of the 2025 building code cycle, which becomes effective January 1st, '26. And what I wanted to relay is I've been, as I say, following this closely. And in the first committee hearing at the Assembly last week, it was clarified that the authors of the bill view the 2025 code cycle as already approved by the California Building Standards Commission and therefore would not be affected. So for staff and others who are looking forward to implementation of the 2025 building code cycle, which includes some really good energy efficiency and climate-related things, as the bill stands now, implementation of that would be unaffected by this bill. It would knock out the '28 code cycle as currently written. But I just thought, if you start seeing something about this, you might like to know that as it currently stands, it would not affect the '25 building code, energy code cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. I sit on the Marin Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee, and we meet next Monday, and I'll make sure, see if this is on the agenda for that. AB 306. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, anybody online, Alison, with their hand raised?
We raise hands for my Zoom audience members, and there's no public comment.
Thank you. That brings us to item three, presentations. Today, we have an overview of June 30th, 2023, actuarial valuation of other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. When you're ready, we'll take the staff report and the presentation.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Gabrielle. I am the Administrative Services Director with the City of Larksboro. The next item is an overview presentation of OPEB or Other Post-Employment Benefits Actuarial Valuation Report that was incorporated in the audit report of June 30th, 2024. So the city contracts with McLeod and Watts to perform the OPEB actuarial valuation calculations every two years. And with us online tonight, we have Kathy McLeod, Principal with McLeod and Watts. Kathy will provide you your council with an overview of the latest OPEB report. I'll turn it over to Kathy to begin her presentation. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi Kathy, and welcome. If it's all right with you, since we have some newer council members, if during your presentation in a regular, timely way, if I have you stop, if they could ask some questions along the way, will that be all right with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Feel free to interrupt me at any time. And I've got a short PowerPoint that I hope covers the highlights, but I also have a copy of the full report with me that I can pull in. So if anybody wants to get into any detail, we can do it that way.
Okay. So if any of the council members have questions meanwhile through the presentation, because it's a lot of material that's newer to a lot of people, then we'll just stop and ask them. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you, Mayor and council members, for having me this evening. Is my volume okay?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Okay. So as you said, this is an overview of the report that was prepared as of June 30, '23. The results of this report are applied for a couple of purposes. In this report, we look at three primary things. We look at a review of how the OPEB or retiree medical liability and assets have changed since the last time we did a full analysis, and that was two years prior on June 30, '21. We also prepare information that's required to be disclosed in the city's audit reports every year. And so in particular, this year covers June 30, '24 audit results. And we also provide information on pre-funding the plan. Pre-funding OPEB report liabilities is optional, unlike the pension valuations and liabilities. OPEB is optional. So we provide information because the city has established an OPEB trust, and we want to facilitate the funding of that plan. In particular, what are we valuing and covering in this report? We're valuing the projected liability for medical coverage for current retirees and for current employees that we project may retire from the city and qualify in the future. The amount that's paid by the city varies based for different employees based on the date that they are hired and years of service with the city. And in the report, we provide a detailed description of the eligibility and amounts of benefits. I wasn't going to cover that here, but if anybody has any questions, we can go through that. In addition to the direct benefit payments that we project are going to be paid by the city toward the cost of the retiree premiums, benefits that have to be valued as a liability for the city include what is called an implicit or implied subsidy. And this is an esoteric thing. It's not an additional cash benefit, but it reflects the fact that prior to Medicare, the premium rates charged by CalPERS for active employees and retirees under 65 are the same premium rate. But in reality, retiree claim costs for medical coverage are higher on average than they are for active employees. So indirectly, there's a subsidy going on between the premiums collected for active employees and the premiums collected for retirees, because some of the active premiums are going to be diverted behind the scenes to help cover higher retiree claim costs. That doesn't cost the city any more directly out of pocket, but from a accounting or liability point of view, we have to assign that higher retiree claim cost to the retirees rather than the actives. And so that that reassignment is called an implicit subsidy. And in your plan, it accounts for about 14% of the current liability. Okay, the process that we follow to prepare the valuation is summarized here. We gather complete census information on the current employees and the current retirees receiving benefits, and that includes birth dates and hire dates and years of service, and also the current health plan enrollment information. All of those things will impact the potential liability to the city. We confirm the eligibility requirements and the various benefit levels for current retirees and potential future retirees. And we also confirm the Medicare enrollment status or future Medicare eligibility, because as we know, for healthcare costs, the cost to the city after Medicare is typically lower than before Medicare. So we want to make sure we've got that information correct. On the asset side of things, we collect the trust balance and activity in and out during each year, and we need to confirm or estimate the long-term expected return on the trust assets, because those investment earnings themselves will go quite a ways toward covering some of the future benefit costs themselves. And then the significant part of the process is we look back at the data we collected two years prior and the things we projected from two years ago, such as the timing and age of retirement, people that left before retirement, were there more or fewer than we expected? Did the new retirees or current retirees change their coverage elections in terms of plan or whether they were covering dependents, et cetera? And if any retirees passed away, what was the age of death? So we look at various things such as that to determine how well our prior assumptions matched up with what actually happened during the past two years. This is an example of some of the types of assumptions that we have to make to prepare the valuation. It's more than this, but this is a good example. How long will retirees receive benefits? That affects the mortality or life expectancy assumptions we make. Do dependents of the retirees get any benefits while the retiree is alive or after their death? And how much will benefits increase in the future? Some of this could be bargained increases, some are just related to the premium rates themselves and how much we assume those will go up in the future. What for active employees, what's the probability that the current employee will stick around and retire from the city? Not everybody does. And certainly, unlike pension benefits where someone leaves with an accrued benefit that will subsequently get paid when they do retire, say, from another purse agency, if an employee leaves the city prior to retirement, whatever liability we've accumulated for them is released. They forfeit that unless they actually retire directly from the city. So that's an important assumption in these valuations. And then again, if someone does retire from the city, when will they retire? Will they take the coverage or not? Will they choose dependents or not, et cetera? So those are examples of the types of things we assume. Any questions up to this point?
Let's just stop here for a second and see if there's any questions. No? Yes, Stephanie has a question. Sorry, hi. So can you answer some of these questions with respect to the City of Larksboro's policy? For instance, do the dependents get any benefits? And also, do employees pay into this? Is there an employer mashing, or is this solely the City of Larksboro paying into this?
Okay, that's a very good question. I'm going to go ahead and pull in from the report here. This is a description of the benefits themselves. So eligibility for coverage in this plan is determined based on someone simply becoming eligible, I mean, initial eligibility for some level of benefits is if someone retires from the city and begins their purse pension benefit within basically four months, 120 days after leaving the city's employ. If they do that, then they qualify for benefits at least. And if they, if they do that and elect to continue the medical coverage, they will get a minimum benefit per month of what in 2024 was $157 per month. They would get that. It increases slightly each year with the medical CPI, but that's the minimum they would get if they retired and continued. Then the city does have higher benefits for retirees who satisfy additional requirements. And those requirements are summarized here. They vary based on the date people are hired and/or retire and the number of years of service they have. So this chart in the report describes generally what people get. And so for people that were hired miscellaneous or fire hired before these dates roughly 25 years ago or 20 years ago, there's a higher benefit paid if they have at least 10 years, but not more than 15 years with the city. They get 100% paid up to the retiree-only Kaiser premium rate. If they have 15 or more years of service with the city, they get 100% paid for the retiree and spouse up to the Kaiser rate, and those are lifetime benefits. And in this case, if the spouse survives, if they have 15 or more years of service and the spouse survives, that would be a lifetime survivor benefit for the spouse as well. And then there are different levels of benefits for people hired between those dates in 2015 and then 2015 and later. So summarized here. And the most recent group of people.
That's in the report?
Yeah, this is.
On the online?
It's on the detailed report.
Oh.
It's in the detailed report, correct, on page 31.
Yeah.
I see. It's not in the handout, Warren. Okay.
Okay, the most recent group of employees, those hired after, in 2015 and later, really don't qualify for additional benefits. They will simply get the minimum required benefit if they continue the CalPERS coverage, which again is at $157 a month. So it's really folks hired prior to these dates in 2015 that are going to get an additional benefit based on additional years of service.
If I could chime in, Kathy, for a moment. One way to think of this is that we have prior promises in closed plans. Your predecessors have closed all the plans. There's, there's no action you can take to further reduce your liability, because current hires are only allowed to enroll in what is defined by CalPERS as a minimum benefit. And the minimum benefit, to answer your question more directly, Vice Mayor, in the minimum benefit, the city makes a monthly contribution that's defined by CalPERS. Today, it's about $170, I think. $158 per month, and then the retiree pays whatever the delta is to their premium. You have retirees and you have 12 current employees that are still eligible for the closed programs, and those have a higher promise. They have a higher contribution level from the city based on whatever was promised in those tiers of benefit before they were closed.
So is there a breakdown in here of what percentage is in the closed program versus the new pool of employees?
That is an excellent question, and I'm looking quickly. And in the report itself, there doesn't appear that there is. I'm certainly have that data, and I'd be more than happy to provide it to you.
We, I know Amelia prepared that table for me, so I know I have it.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very good question to know what's the residual group of, of active employees, as except as 12 plus the current.
Yeah, I can tell you it's 12 active employees are still eligible for a higher benefit.
Great, thank you. Gabe?
Yeah, so just a quick question on, on the forecast, I guess, you know, the projection of liability. That means that those 12 and the retirees are, you know, going to be considered for actuarial calculations, but then also spouses and dependents and so forth, right? So it becomes a pretty extensive tree of uncertainty, right?
That is, that is correct. So for, for retired employees in that category, the moving parts are less substantial. We, you know, they typically after retirement, while they can change the plan and they could voluntarily discontinue spouse's coverage, for the most part, after someone is retired and their benefit level determined, they've chosen a plan and covered a spouse, whatever seems to be working for them. And most often, the moving parts are how much is that premium rate going to go up in the future and how long is the retiree and spouse going to live? So we have a pretty decent handle on what the projected liability is for the current retirees there. For the current active employees, it's, there's more moving parts, but probably the biggest variable is will those employees stick around and retire from the city?
Okay, thank you. And then, of course, inflation of healthcare costs is a factor as well.
Correct, for everyone, yes.
All right, Kathy, thank you. Could you keep, you can keep going.
Okay, I'll do that. So as I said, we collect all the data, and after we've reviewed the prior experience under this, then, and looked at how our prior assumptions seem to match up with actual experience, what actually happened, then we set assumptions about what we think will happen going forward. So in addition to the things I just described on the prior page, we also have to project how much the benefit costs will increase each year. Then, once we have those assumptions set and, and we're looking ahead and we think we've got a good handle on who we're valuing and who might get how much benefit in the future, for each individual person and for each individual future payment that we're projecting for that person, we collect it all together and, and discount each separate payment back to the valuation date to get the current liability value, a discounted liability value. So setting the discount rate used to take the future benefit payment amounts and discount them back to the present becomes a pretty important assumption for us. This is, and this is kind of the only real actuarial thing I'm going to throw in here, but this, just a quick look that in terms that we use, if someone is looking at the report, when we do that discounting of all the future projected benefits back to the present, that's what this green bar represents. And from the actuaries' point of view, this is really our best assessment of the future benefit liability expressed in today's dollars. That's what this green bar is. From that, then our job becomes to allocate these potential future costs to service years and what you have to reflect in your audit and how we would recommend funding. So the portion of this bar that we allocate to years that people have already worked for the city and produced value for the city, the amount that we allocate to that past for accounting purposes is called the total OPEB liability, and for actuarial funding purposes is called the actuarial accrued liability. But again, it's just the portion of this future benefit value that we've allocated to service years and have already been worked. And the remaining amount of this green bar, we are going to assign to future service years, one bit for every year. And the amount that we assign in the current year is called the service cost or normal cost. And then there will be a similar service cost or normal cost in each future year until all of the active employees have retired. And that's how we allocate costs. From that point forward, once we have these basic allocations done, then we stop and compare to say, well, how do the plan assets that have been set aside so far, how do those assets compare to the past service liability? And ideally, these numbers would be the same. Ideally, there would have been enough money set aside and invested to match the amount that we've allocated to past service. So we look at that. If they're not equal, if the assets are less, then you have an unfunded liability, and that unfunded liability will hopefully get funded in future years. So this is the unfunded liability for accounting purposes is called the net OPEB liability, and that's what's going to go in your accounting, your OPEB note somewhere. So it's just kind of a visual of what we're doing. I'm going to go back to talking about the discount rate for a minute. The discount rate is, and the, the city has established an irrevocable OPEB trust, which is great, toward pre-funding the liability. There's lots of advantages, and I'll talk about them in a minute. But if you don't have a trust involved, then the employer is required to use a bond, a high-grade municipal bond index rate, and those have been floating between 2% and 4% over the past four to six years. So a lot of volatility in that. It's going to be a lower rate. The lower the discount rate, the higher the liability, and the higher the discount rate, the lower. So you want to get out of this camp if you can. If the employer is contributing consistently at or above the level that the actuary recommends, then you can use the trust rate of return. And, and that's going to be a higher rate. In the last valuation we prepared for the city, that rate was, I think, 5.45%. And hopefully, that's, yeah, 5.45. That rate's probably going to be improving for this upcoming fiscal year end, but that's where it was on June 30, '24 or '23. And if you're contributing to the plan and have a trust, but you're not consistent or not contributing enough, then we have to solve for discount rate in between. And in years, in recent past years, that's where the city has been. In, in recent past years, the city's been contributing, but not enough. But that's now transitioned so that in the past five years, the city's average contribution rate relative to what we've assumed is 100% or more of what we've recommended. So we've now transitioned from a blended rate to using the full trust rate of return, which is great. Any questions on that? Okay. There is a page in the report that, that summarizes this, is one of the, the, one of the exhibits that's required to go into the audit report in the Required Supplementary Information section. But essentially, this is just a year-over-year comparison of what the actuary has calculated as the recommended contribution and how much has actually been contributed. So you can see, looking back a couple of years, back in '20 and '21, the city didn't contribute as much as we recommended. And so the percent of what was contributed was 82 and 86%. So these were years where we were required to use a blended discount rate. Then started in '22, '23, '24, the city increased the contribution levels up, and now that contribution relative to what we've recommended is over 100%. So we look at a five-year average, and that average is now up over 100%. So as I said, we can now use the trust return. So the importance of this message is if, if this contribution rate falls below, we're going to have to start dropping the discount rate. And when we drop the discount rate, the liability goes up. So just be mindful of the fact that those contributions do impact the amount of the liability that you show on your financial statements.
And just to kind of clarify that, '20 and '21, I recall we made some strategic financial decisions based on the initial implications of COVID and what we were going to potentially see in our revenue decrease. And so I think it was March 2020, we had that, an emergency panel in which we tried to figure out how to protect our assets in the unknown. And that was one of, if I recall right, that was one of the decisions we made was to, just to, to not fund it entirely, because we really weren't sure where the economy was going to go, our own city's economy during the early stages of COVID. Am I clarifying that correctly about, if I remember?
Around 2017, 2018, the council made a decision that we would try to invest at least a minimum of half a million dollars a year into the OPEB trust. About that time, it became apparent to us that to manage our cash flow relative to the federal funding we had for the bridge, we should probably hold that money in reserve and not put it in a trust, just in case we still needed it for cash flow. Because once you put it in an irrevocable trust, you can't touch it. So the, we decided to park it in the reserve. Then COVID came, and the council said, we don't think we should resume trying to make these payments while we're uncertain about how the economy has landed, plus we were continuing to have those cash flow challenges. In recent years, the council has parked a portion of the general fund reserve with a designation for OPEB. But again, it's not in the trust, it's in the reserve, so it's not getting credit in the way that Ms. McLeod's talking about.
Before you go on, any questions so far? All right, thank you. Keep going.
Okay, very good. And that, that is just a, a general comment. Is, and that is one of the values of, one of the, the flexibilities of the OPEB program. While, while certainly, it's generally advisable to pre-fund a defined benefit program like a pension or retiree medical program, the fact that, that the benefits are malleable and, and that pre-funding is not required by law, it, it does provide some bit of a safety net that if, if there are cash flow needs somewhere else, you can temporarily discontinue or reduce those payments. That's certainly possible. We just simply want to make sure to deliver the message that, that that comes with a cost in the OPEB side of when the funding is not maintained at or above this 100% average, that it will cause the discount rate to go down and the liability to go up. So it comes with that trade-off, but, but otherwise, it's not required. Okay. The, now, now I'm going to transition from account from just general results and what's been funded to what's required for accounting purposes in the report. So once we prepare the valuation, do all the projections, come up with a general liability results, then we stop and we assemble the information that's required for the audit for accounting purposes, and then we take that same information and assemble it differently to assist with plan funding. So in this report, since I said we covered both of those things in the accounting section, I just wanted to review it very quickly. The primary information that's reported is called the net OPEB liability. And again, that's just the difference between the OPEB liability we've assigned to past service, which is labeled total OPEB liability for accounting purposes, and the market value of assets. So it's the accrued liability minus the assets is called the net OPEB liability. But the full change in that net OPEB liability each year is not recognized immediately. So if a year ago, the net OPEB liability was negative $3 million, and this year it's negative $2 million, you don't recognize that $1 million drop right away. We are required, as the actuary, to break out four different sources of why the liability is different than we expected. So those four different categories that we have to look at is differences that come because we updated the assumptions going forward. Liability experience means differences from what we projected would happen versus what actually did happen over the prior period. Investment experience, meaning were the trust earnings greater than or less than we expected? And then in the last category, plan changes, were the benefits themselves modified? So we have to break out of the liability number, changes for each of those different things every year. And for accounting purposes, those are recognized, not all immediately, but partially, and the remaining amount is deferred as an adjustment on your books. So just a quick look at a year ago versus this year. So last year, for fiscal year end 2023... So last year for fiscal year end twenty three. We measured everything on June thirty twenty two and this year for fiscal year end twenty four, we measure everything on June thirty twenty three. The liability went down a bit, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, not a lot, but it's lower and that's always good. The trust assets went up by a hundred and fifty four, fifty five thousand, and that's very good. So the net difference between the liability and assets from a year ago was an improvement of about two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. So that's good news. Then we stop and look at what are the deferred items? That we have to think about. So from, from the current year. And from all the prior years since Gatsby seventy five has been around. We have to track all those different sources of changes. And the amounts that have not yet been recognized but are going to be as outflows, meaning increases in liability. These are deferred amounts remaining to be recognized. And for deferred inflows, meaning improvements in your position that have not yet been recognized, that's two point two million. So these differences are actually which show up in your statement and net position. So a bigger difference this year on your books because of what your, of these various deferred things. But that's the gist of it. It's your assets, liability minus assets, plus or minus some complicated deferred items. And that's the gist of what you do for accounting. As I said, just looking back, the, I talked about that, the liability is about a hundred and forty thousand lower, assets are a hundred and fifty five better. So most of the change. This improvement from this past year is attributed to assumption changes we made in the twenty twenty three valuation and some plan experience. So retiring mortality and survivor elections were. Different than we expected. Generally speaking, this reduced the liability. And then we made some updated assumptions about Medicare eligibility and future healthcare costs. And that partially offset that. So these are the main reasons for the changes, but the gist of it is overall, the net position improved by about two hundred and ninety five thousand. Any questions about the accounting?
Uh, Vice Mayor has one, please. Sorry.
Hi Kathy. What, uh, can you please explain a deferred inflow again? What, what is that?
A deferred inflow would be um. A benefit to the plan, meaning in a prior year, there may have been. Some reduction in the liability or some increase in the assets more than expected. So it would have reduced the liability to some, the net liability to some extent. But, but because of the way the accounting rules work, it doesn't all get reflected all at once. I'm going to drag in this report again if I can. It was, it's wandered off on my screen to some of you, but I don't know why it's not coming onto the screen with the. For some reason, there we go. Was it coming onto the screen? In the report on page nineteen, we have a schedule that looks at every deferred item. Since Gatsby seventy five was implemented back in two thousand and eighteen. These are the remaining amounts. This shows the initial amounts of them, the annual, et cetera. We can see back in here in two, in the last valuation. There were a number of things that reduced the liability by quite a lot, you know, together, these amounts were. Almost six million dollars, you know, five and a half million dollars. These are, they're not, they're not recognized immediately. So each year for these items where you're recognizing five hundred and eighty three and five hundred and eighty seven thousand. So these are examples of things that reduce the liability, but you're only recognizing gradually.
And I see. Yeah, this is helpful. This table is helpful.
Yeah, it will come through in these years and then when fully recognized, they drop off.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to shift to talk about plan funding for a minute. Again, we use the same results, the same actuarial process, et cetera, to get the raw numbers. And now we shuffle them to assist in developing numbers to pre-fund the, pre-fund the plan. Just a quick reminder, the benefits of pre-funding, we get to use a higher discount rate, the trust rate of return, hopefully, and that lowers the liability. Uh, also importantly, when you have money on your books as reserves, we're not permitted to match that up against the OPEB liability. In the audit, but if you move it to the, to the trust itself, we can now offset that liability by that asset. So that shows a lower net OPEB liability on your books. Um, and then from the participant's point of view and taxpayer's point of view. You get improved benefit security for the promises made on to provide that benefit. Taxpayer equity, when you're funding the future benefit during the working lifetimes of the employees providing service. It's a better match of service to uh, uh, for taxpayers to uh, the cost of the benefit. This chart just gives a quick look at where things have been and kind of how they're progressing along the way. So um, as you can see that the trust hasn't been around that long. This graph, the green bar is the trust, so it hasn't been there that long. But one important thing to notice is from the time the trust was established and contributions started to be made. We, now, there was also a plan change in here where I believe that maybe some fire employees were spun out of active employee groups. So some of this liability I think is relating to that. This liability drop, but some of the liability drop is because we're now able to start looking. At a higher discount rate, which lowered the liability. So that's part of what's going on here. And then in the subsequent years, we can see this liability going down again as we're able to improve the discount rate. And the assets begin to build up. That's just a quick visual. All right, this is the information that we use to develop the funding numbers for the plan. This, again, just the raw numbers from the valuation. I showed you the graph where we talk about the present by a projected benefits. That's everything that we project that would be paid to a current retiree or a potential future retiree. With the future benefit payments discounted back to the valuation date. That's this number nine point four million. Then we allocate that to the past service. There's the past service part of that. And then we stop and compare that to the assets. So the unfunded liability that we're looking to pre-fund now is about seven point five million. And then in addition to that, we have current costs accruing because this is only the past service cost of part of it. So the part of new costs that we're assigning to the year, or this is called the normal cost, and that's about a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. So those are the raw numbers that we use. And these numbers are actually very similar to what you could interpret from the pension valuations where CalPERS will develop. An actuarial accrued liability, they'll compare it to your assets and give you a UAL, an unfunded liability. And then you'll have a normal cost payment. In the pension world, it comes, the normal cost is converted to a percent of payroll and that's remitted every month as you pay payroll. In the OPEB program, because the benefit is not based on payroll, uh, we just state it as a fixed dollar amount. So we take this amount here, the one twenty eight normal cost and the unfunded liability here. And from that, you can see the hundred and twenty eight normal cost. Then from the unfunded liability of seven point five million, we develop a payment to pay that off. To pay this down and there's a payment every year to get that paid down. We interest adjust things to the end of the year, just like CalPERS does for your UAL payment there. And the sum of those amount, the normal cost payment plus the UAL amount adjusted with interest is your. Recommended contribution, the actuarially determined contribution. So here are the amounts that we developed for these three fiscal years based on the results of this report. And if this were a pension valuation, it would be pretty easy from there because you would just. Assume you have to contribute that much to CalPERS and be done with it. In the OPEB world, it's not that simple though, because in the pension world, you contribute the money to the plan and they pay the benefits. For your OPEB or retiree medical, CalPERS wants nothing to do with paying your benefits, right? They, they won't pay them. Even though you have the head of health coverage there, they won't pay the benefits. They, you pay the benefits and then what we do is we just count those benefit payments as a portion of the contribution. So this chart down here shows the three different. Sources of money that we apply toward meeting these contribution numbers. And if we look at fiscal year in twenty four, we can see that the sum of the three contribution numbers, one, two, and three added up to more. Than the EDC. So in this year, you contributed slightly more than was needed to meet that funding requirement. And the additional amount that you fund just goes to help reducing that unfunded liability a little bit more. Uh, this chart here, the very last one I prepared, just is designed to say. How, how long is it intended to take that the unfunded liability would be paid down? So if we start from this unfunded liability that we calculated. For this year. And we look at the time that we're. Looking to have that paid down. We're anticipating that over seventeen years, that will get paid down to zero. Now that assumes. That there won't be any other new gains or losses that might increase or decrease that unfunded liability. And that's pretty unrealistic. There's always something, you know, as evidenced by that big chart I showed you before of all the line items. From assumption changes and investment earnings changes. Something's going to happen and we're just not going to be exact on any of these things. But we look at it again every two years and to the extent that this number remains what we assume, then after seventeen years, that will get paid down to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um. We'll start with questions of Kathy first and then we can go to staff if we need to. Are there any questions on the presentation? From the actuarial? Gabe, it looks like he had one.
Yeah, I'm, I just, by, by the way, thank you. This is, um, you know, this is great to review. I, I think the first time we did this, that, that I remember twenty nineteen when we did our pension obligation bond. So it's really good to revisit, you know, it's plus or minus a year from there. So just in summary, this is costing the city close to seven hundred thousand a year. We have about seven and a half million unfunded liability and, and, and we have an. Irrevocable trust, which I don't remember what the amount is in there, but that's money, you know. That's helping pay down the seven and a half and it should be amortized or gone by twenty forty one. That's a question. Are the, all those statements correct?
I would say generally, yes. Well, I do want to, so here the, the, the trust value on June thirty twenty three was about eight hundred and fifty eight thousand. So about ten percent of that past service.
Okay, okay.
Yes, the, the idea is that unless there is unexpected changes in what we've projected, and there will be some, but we don't know if they'll be better or worse. But starting from what we know now, the seven and a half million, if the city contributes at or above the level we recommend. This amount should be paid down by twenty forty one.
Okay. Now, is there the option of restructuring the debt? You know, that's something that, you know, the P O B was, you know, something we did when money was real cheap. I think we had a two point three percent or I forget, but is, is this a candidate for anything? You know, where if interest rates were to go down, we, we might change, you know, what's going on here.
Certainly, that's an, that's, that is the challenge of, of issuing those kind of bonds or something like that is that it's, it's, it's always an arbitrage. If, if things stay where you, where they are, if they're low, when you're able to secure those. And you can repay them with, with money when returns get higher, it's a win. If things, the situation flips, it could be a loss where you're paying back more and then you're still trying to fund this. So um, that's a, that's a question for somebody uh with more of an investment, you know. Eye on things than, than we have right here. Our focus is really on the liability side of the equation. So, um, but, but certainly that could be pursued.
And I think Dan was going to have a response to that.
I just was going to remind you, you are, you, you need to think of this as a debt in the sense that you made a promise. And by you, I mean the city to retirees. But it's not a debt contractually in the way the pension is. You manage, this is a benefit that the city offered and bound itself to through contracts with employees. But it's different than CalPERS, Kath, Ms. McLeod made a point to say. You know, if this was a pension program with through CalPERS, you'd be done. You have to pay this amount. You don't get to discuss it. And so that defines a debt that you could talk about refinancing here. It would be. Are you thinking you could go get a debt to fund your OPEB trust because you think your OPEB trust? You could beat the interest rates, like you could perform better. That, you know, that's a discussion to have, but it, you want to think about these very differently. The pension and OPEB are not the same.
And, and given if, if money gets cheaper, the discount rate that you were talking about, you know, the trade off between the liability and discount. Would kind of correct and make our costs lower, right? So a restructuring wouldn't necessarily help us. Is that, is that true?
It would be a lengthy discussion about your comfort level with investment risk versus. Trying to just fund the OPEB trust over time and knowing you'd have the more secure. More modest but secure returns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions, Ms. McLeod? Thank you for that presentation. Amelia, is there anything you would like to add?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you, Kathy.
Uh, anything else you'd like to add?
I was just going to note that, you know, we're about to enter our budget season.
Right.
And the management of. What's due next year and what you want to do strategically with the OPEB trust will be part of that discussion. And I imagine after you have more time to digest the presentation that you had this evening. You'll have questions and Ms. Gabrielle and I are available. Ms. McLeod's easily reached if we have additional questions.
Thank you. Um, I know this is a presentation, but are there any questions for members of our audience? Seeing none, and I don't see any hands raised online. Do you, Allison? Okay. So we'll close this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item four, which is our consent calendar. Do I have any members of the council who would like to pull an item from this consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none? Do I have anyone from the audience who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, seeing none, and I see no hands online. So I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second? Second? Allison, do we need a roll call anymore? All right, then, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No? And any abstentions? No. All right, that pa consent calendar passes. Leads us to item five, city managers' report.
Uh, I'm going to highlight one matter for the council and the community, and it's a reminder that we are in the midst of a study analyzing the building that we're in now. So that our consultants can produce a historic structures report. The public comment period on the materials that the consultants presented at a charrette last month closes on Friday. So if you still haven't made comments, you can go to our website and there's a news flash on the homepage. That will direct you to the right link and you can see the PowerPoint presentation and the presentation boards from the charrette and you can provide us with comments.
Okay. That always reminds me to have everybody sign up on our website for alerts and notices for agenda items, et cetera. And there's a button on the homepage that says notify me. And if you're interested in planning commission or park and recreation commission items, you can ask for that information to be sent directly to you when it's available. All right, is there questions of that? Anyone? All right, that moves us to council members' reports and comments.
Thanks, city manager.
Uh, anyone? Sarah? Okay. Okay.
Uh, isn't city managers or we'll report first?
Oh, he did, didn't he?
That was it.
That was it.
I only did one either.
My God, I was, I, I have a quick one. Um, so, so I was at the smart board meeting today and the shuttle. Between the ferry and the um, smart train will now go to seven days a week. And that's, um, you know, starting on April seventh and they get about forty riders a day. Another kind of interesting um issue in the community has been the ferry itself. And the ferry services have, uh, the, in October, held a, a meeting about putting a parking garage there. And there was a lot of interest and, um, and discussion in the community. So in discussing that yesterday, you know, they reached out to various council members and, um. You know, being on TAM and SMART, I, I guess they, they, you know, just wanted to let me know that they're basically working on getting an environmental impact report. So no decisions have been made. The, the one thing that I think is just important to bear to mind is, is that they're, you know, um, doing this because they anticipate really strong demand. But they have not yet reached the ridership that they had pre-COVID. So, um, you know, that's about six thousand riders a day and it'll probably take four to six years to get that level. And then, you know, at that point, the, the claim is, you know, people were not using the service because they didn't have parking and the planning cycle is so long. So that's, you know, that's one of the discussions. So I think there are just so many variables. Like we know that a lot of the people riding the ferry come from Ross and we have new options for them, you know, PAS, e-bikes. Um, we also know SMART is bringing in some people who use the ferry and, and right now it's about ten percent of their, you know, roughly three thousand people a day. Uh, so, so a lot in motion. Uh, so so a lot in motion, a lot of unknowns. But I I think this is something that Greenbree and and Larkspur in particular will be really interested in and it affects us. And you know, I'll just keep you posted. The the only other little um transportation fact I thought was really interesting is, you know, Smart is now getting two to three thousand people a day. The ferry is heading towards four thousand, forty five thousand people across the bridge. So so if you just think of like a river and a tiny stream next to it and what those rates have to do with with traffic flow congestion. You know, greenhouse gases, et cetera. You know, it's an interesting thing to keep in mind. So a lot of modeling is going on, but. As I said, you know, as this comes up later in the year, I'll I'll certainly try to keep the community informed and 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 the council as well. So that's it for me.
Okay. Anything on my right side?
Uh, just real quick, thank you. Uh, the Rosar Valley paramedic authority, I just wanted to report out. Uh, is undergoing some changes to its structure. Uh, and uh, we don't have anything yet. We have some working groups where we're trying to figure it all out and I will keep you updated as that progresses.
Great.
Um, and very quickly for me, um, about Marin, uh, clean energy. There's a board meeting tomorrow on the budget and I will be very focused on um. M C E's ability to continue to provide clean energy to all of us um at a affordable rate. Um, because uh, that that is up for discussion at this uh next budget meeting. Um, secondly, I'd like to encourage people who may not. You have to opt into M C E. So if you currently aren't opted in, I would encourage you to take a look at that and compare M C E's rates versus P G N E's rates. Um, they do vary. Um, and so it may make sense for you to opt into M C E. Um, so I'd encourage people to take a look at that option. And um, lastly, M C E is, uh, they just won a state grant to uh. Pilot a virtual power plant. And I think that's a really exciting idea and they're gonna start in Richmond. Um, in the lower income neighborhoods of Richmond and also because Richmond has a refinery and so the air um quality is isn't as good in Richmond. But I think um a virtual power plant um idea where they utilize existing residential and commercial solar. Um, to send power back to the grid during high um usage of points during during peak usage during the day, I think would be a really great idea. Um, it it would benefit the community. It would hold rates down. M C E has issues with currently with curtailment, which is. It 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 impacts all the C C A's, but anyways, curtailment is when there's we produce too much solar during the day. But usage is usually between the hours of four and nine P M. And so the the production doesn't really match demand and so. Um, we have the regulators who are actually shutting off um production. Um, because there's not enough demand during certain times and that actually is 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 not a good thing. And it's costing ratepayers. So we need to find solutions to that. And I think this this virtual PowerPoint solution could be potentially very interesting. So I'll keep everybody updated on that.
Never heard of that.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, um, I I'll wrap up by just acknowledging um from the community that I did receive all fifty five. Letters um from uh the Greenbree residents regarding the Navarro N R G storage location. They're all here. I have them all and I will um be meeting with the city manager on Tuesday at our regular meeting for a discussion about this. And I'll be getting back to the fifty five residents who sent me these letters. So they're here, they've been received. I just want to acknowledge that. Um, that brings us to uh public hearings, item number seven, and we have no public hearings tonight. So moves us to business item, um, which is number eight. Eight point one is a resolution accepting Marin County's electrification roadmap. Um, I believe assistant city manager Shannon O'Hare has got this one and we do have. A handout that is available on the dais, available in the back and online. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, great. Um, so we are um being asked to consider resolution eleven twenty five, accepting the Marin County electrification roadmap.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor Way, members of the city council. My name is Shannon O'Hare. I'm the assistant city manager. I just have a brief introduction. I will not be providing the lion's share of the overview of this. Um, of this electrification roadmap that we're asking council to consider adopting this evening. Um, I was just give a brief introduction. So the electrification roadmap before you this evening for consideration. Is the culmination of over a year of work across the region with numerous stakeholders, agencies, um, and community groups. To put together um different ten recommended actions and subtasks for communities in Marin to implement to assist with the transition of Marin's buildings to an all electric future. The purpose of having a smaller plan here, we've talked about our climate action plan a lot this year. Is to have a shared set of concrete goals that are broad enough to where we can work on them together and they can evolve over time. But specific enough to where we can really start tackling all of these things that are on our work plans. Together as a region, information share and serve as a guideline on the electrification portion of our climate goals. Um, the specifics of the roadmap this evening, I'm going to hand over to the sustainability coordinator for M C E P, Christine O'Rourke. Um, and if you have any questions, both Christine and I will answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
Welcome, Christine. I see you.
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Christine O'Bourke. And I am the sustainability coordinator for the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, or M C E P for short. So thank you for having me here this evening. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Marin County Building Electrification Roadmap. And. Um, this roadmap, the primary author for the roadmap was the county of Marin staff, but they were assisted by a steering committee. That included members from M C E P and the steering committee was very involved in conducting outreach and doing developing the um. Strategies and the recommendations that are in the plan. So the impetus for the plan was a Marin civil grand jury report that was issued in twenty twenty two. And that report recommends.
Hang on just a second. Are you is the volume's not very good? Okay, just bring it closer. You do have a a lower tone in your voice.
Okay, I think I can.
And is it picked up okay by our broadcast? All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Sure. No, thank you for for um letting me know that. So the impetus for the plan was a grand jury civil, Marin civil grand jury report that was issued in twenty twenty two. And that report recommended, among other things, that the local governments in Marin work together to develop a comprehensive and coordinated approach. To Marin um electrifying the buildings in Marin and also not just planning, but implementation as well. So uh, most of the jurisdictions, including Larkspur, agreed with that recommendation in their responses to the civil grand jury. So here we are, three years later. Now, the this plan, of course, is going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that come from the use of natural gas in our buildings. That's the primary reason for the plan, but there are some very important co benefits that I want to highlight as well. So as many of you probably know, burning methane in our homes does release some harmful pollutants like formaldehyde, unburned methane. Carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide as well, and these pollutants can lead to some serious respiratory and cardiac health impacts. Now, in addition to this, um, so switching to, you know, uh electrification can help to alleviate those impacts. Now, in addition to the health and safety co benefits, there are also resilience benefits. Uh, for example, after a major disaster like an earthquake, it can take days to weeks to get the electrical grid back up and running. But it could take weeks to even months to get natural gas infrastructure repaired and back online. In addition to these co benefits, there are certain policy and and mandates that are. Right now at the state and the regional as well as the local level. So we really wanted to be able to have a plan that addressed all of these mandates and and helped us to move forward with electrification. So I'm gonna start with the local level, uh, the local lens for this. This is a look at Marin countywide emissions. And if I did a graph for Larkspur emissions, it would look very similar to this as well. The dotted line, that red dotted line is our goal for twenty thirty, which is to reduce emissions nine to um thirty percent, forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by the year twenty thirty. And those orange and red bands up above are emissions that are coming from our built environment. So the orange band, our emissions from natural gas and the red band are emissions from electricity use. And that red band's been getting smaller over time because our electricity has been getting much cleaner. Which provides a really good reason for doing electrification in the first place because we're switching a dirty fuel for something that's much cleaner. Now, one thing that's really obvious here is that if we don't, we really need to do something and address these natural gas emissions. If we're going to have any hope of achieving our twenty thirty targets. Um, not only that, but also our twenty forty five target, which is to reach zero net emissions. So for that reason, all of our climate action plans throughout Marin County have electrification measures in their plans, including the Larkspur Climate Action Plan. So moving on to the regional and state level, there are state um and regional mandates that are really um. Helping to drive this plan. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has adopted these, what they're called zero NOx regulations. NOx is shorthand for nitrous oxide. And the air district regulates uh air pollutants, including NOx, because it is a precursor to smog. In effect, these zero NOx regulations, because they are banning appliances that use natural gas. And by appliances, I'm talking about just water heaters and furnaces. Um, it also eliminates the greenhouse gas emissions that comes from the use of the natural gas. So the air district's rules start kicking in in twenty twenty seven on January first. And at that time, and this is less than two years from now, uh, no, um, only zero NOx. Water heaters will be allowed to be sold or installed in the nine county San Francisco Bay area. Two years later, in twenty twenty nine, that regulation will be extended to all furnaces. And then two years after that, in twenty thirty one, it will then encompass water heaters, the larger water heaters that are used in non res mostly with non residential buildings. These regulations are not going to impact things like fireplaces or cooktops or even dryers. Um, that's because the air district really wanted to focus on the the major uses of natural gas. So that is water heaters and furnaces. Um, also, it does not compel anybody to switch out these appliances before they're ready to. It really is when your appliance appliance burns out and needs to be replaced, then you're going to have to replace it with that. Uh, it would also, of course, impact any new building, a new construction that requires a water heater or a hot um furnace. Now, in addition to the air district rules, the at the state level, the California Air Resources Board is also looking at developing these kinds of regulations. They were originally looking at twenty thirty as a state starting date. But they are trying to align their regulations with the Bay Area um regulations and have an earlier start date. So um, I think getting beyond what's going to be banned and what year is really the acknowledgement and the understanding that there are these levers happening at the state and regional level. That are going to do far more than what we could do at our local jurisdiction level. And the plan really acknowledges this and um. And so is working and building on these state regulations. And our job here is really to make the, you know, make the community aware of new regulations, to reduce friction and barriers to implementation. Help to train up our workforce and make sure the workforce is prepared for this. And and to try to go beyond what's required and just to um motivate people to make voluntarys um electrification changes, upgrades as well. So the roadmap was developed over the course of sixteen months. As I said, there was a steering committee that was very active in the development of this and we worked with many, many community partners. We had three workshops, in person workshops, and at those workshops, we had representatives from community based organizations like seniors and disadvantaged communities. We had members from the building community, so we had realtors and developers. We had local and regional government staff, um, appointed climate commissioners attended and also representatives from the utilities. Everybody worked um very closely together and really it was it was a real collaborative effort. And we worked to kind of resolve differences and come up with recommendations that everybody could endorse in the end. So there are ten recommended actions. I'll just go through them very briefly. One is to create a central hub for easy access for electrification information. The county has actually already started this process. They have a a pretty good website. Um, and there's an acknowledgement that everybody wants their information kind of in different ways. Some people want to just read a bunch of things. Some people want to see videos. Some people want a phone call or have visit. So we also have, um, we're pointing people to other resources where they can get additional information, not just what's available on the website. Next is to implement advanced green building and electrification codes. Uh, as you know, the building code is updated every three years and right now we're looking at um the new code, the twenty twenty five code. And we are working at M C E P to develop, to look at that code and to consider any additional reach code provisions that we might be recommending. The ideas that we're gonna, we want to come up with a model code that all of the jurisdictions will could um could adopt. Implement permits, streamlining and incentives, providing low cost, low cost financing programs. Some of these are already available, but they, we need to do a better job of making sure that there. People are aware of them. Developing the building and energy, uh, the workforce pipeline, as I said, you know, training our our contractors is an important piece of this puzzle. Working with P G N E to improve infrastructure planning, um, letting our letting P G N E know, for example, when we have big uh new developments coming online. So that they can be prepared for that, make sure that there's enough uh capacity available. Implementing actions in partnership with community based organizations, and we did kind of get a head start on this in the outreach that we did for the for the development of the plan. Implementing the Marin Countywide E V Acceleration Strategy. Implementing a the a time of listing energy policy, uh, this is or assessment policy. This is something kind of one of the later actions and these actions are all, uh, there is a a timeline in the plan. And we're recommending, you know, certain subtasks that need to be done within over the next six years to get us to um electrification by twenty thirty. And then finally piloting a neighborhood decommissioning project. So um, the roadmap, adopting the roadmap and adopting the resolution that was in your meeting packet. It is this resolution and the roadmap itself does not compel the city to take any specific actions. Instead, instead, it really is an acknowledgement by the city that the roadmap provides some very valuable guidance and next steps to take. For the uh transition, the electrification transition. To date, the roadmap has been adopted by several jurisdictions, including the county of Marin, Fairfax, Tiburon, Mill Valley and Corder Medera. So um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You have one more progress to date slide. Is that something we're gonna discuss later or?
Um, you know what? That was just an extra slide from the county and these are just some of the actions that the county has taken. So if there's any interest in in kind of reviewing this, I can review it.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, let's start with questions that the council may have. Sarah, do you have a question?
Thank you so much, Christine, for that report. Really appreciate that. Um, you uh outlined the ten actions and one was, you know, implementing the advanced green building and electrification codes for which you mentioned that. You're working on a model code for all jurisdictions, um, so that we can all adopt the same uh green building and electrification codes. Do you have any um idea when that might be final, given what um our residents just told us about this bill? Um, you know, getting that done as soon as possible is is important. Um, is that is that something you can give me some timeframe for?
Well, so um A B three oh six certainly is throwing a little wrench in the um in the works here. We are looking at that very closely and it appears that A B three, so it is, you know, it's it's being currently worked on. It is fat being fast tracked through the California Assembly. It is the the intention is that it would go into effect on July first, so we are watching this.
Wow.
Um, it seems that what it would do is preclude a city from adopting, you know, going any further or doing any kind of a reach code. Unless the city had all previously before January first of this year, adopted a reach code. So for example. So for example, Larkspur's adopted the Tier 1 reach code, except for the energy provisions in Tier 1. So it sounds, at least to me, and I'm not an attorney, that you would be able to adopt the Tier 1 with the next, with the next building code. So it may be, so we'll see if AB 306 passes. If it doesn't pass, we are, we've been studying the, the new code. It's got some pretty aggressive things in there that essentially, because of the energy budgets and the way this works, and it gets very technical, it essentially requires, without actually requiring an all-electric building, but it pretty much requires an electric water heater and furnace in this, for this climate zone. So if there are any additional requirements, we were looking, we're kind of looking at renovations, maybe perhaps like EV charging, even bicycle parking are some things that we're looking at. But we don't want to do anything that's unnecessarily complicated if we feel like the code is, you know, it's getting us mostly where we want to be anyway. So that said, in order to adopt the code and to do a reach code, we have to do, and there has to be a cost-effectiveness study done, and that's done at the state level, and they're still working on that, and they may not have that done until the fall. So I don't have a timeline for you to answer your question, except to say that we're kind of aware of all of these things that are happening, and we're trying to come up with something as soon as possible so that, so that all of our jurisdictions can adopt it by, by the end of the year in time for January. If it's not, January 1 is when the city has to adopt the new building code, but amendments to that can be adopted afterwards as well. It doesn't have to be done by January 1st. It just makes it a little easier if it is.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, just a quick, by the way, thank you for the report. It's, yeah, I am really happy to see this moving forward. I do have one concern. It sort of piggybacks off what Vice Mayor Andre was talking about, which is energy costs. Can you say a little bit more? Let me just frame the question, you know, for specificity. So I'm assuming most of the costs to residential and commercial buildings will be the heating and the heating in the winter. And I, you know, just pulled up my own energy bill, and, you know, for my 1400 square-foot home, it's, it's about $105 to heat per month. And, and the sale is, you know, in terms, but it looks like the heating is at, costs about 10 cents per kilowatt hour, if you convert terms to kilowatt hours. Now, you know, I think MCE rates are, are higher, but then there's still the delivery charge, the, the grid charge, you know, which I have is 15 and 45 cents, almost 60, almost five or six times as much. Is that matching what you guys have seen as possible increased costs for heating?
Yeah, so now you're getting into the cost-effectiveness study. It's done at the state level, and when they do it for the different climate zones, so it's, we're in climate zone, in Marin County, climate zone 2 and climate zone 3. So it's not done at the jurisdictional level. It's done in these climate zones. And I'm not sure if they're taking, you know, how much they're looking at local prices for the electricity and versus natural gas, or if they're looking at statewide averages. I don't know. They are looking at different upgrades that could be made and the cost of those and the energy savings that would be the cost of installing, you know, doing these upgrades versus the energy that could be saved. So I guess that's really, I'm saying, you know, I'm not sure of the details of this to really give you a good answer.
I mean, that would be extremely helpful because this is, you know, I've gone to the CPUC, you know, CE, and I've, you know, I've served on MCE for, you know, a year and a half or more, and, and that is the loudest drumbeat I'm hearing, you know, and that was, you know, spiking with inflation, but the cost. So if these numbers, you know, and I don't want my, you know, couch, you know, back of the envelope math to be, you know, seen as official, but, you know, what I'm seeing is that my energy bill could go up five times, you know, so I could go from 100 to 500 a month, you know, if we replaced our 95, 98% gas with an electric unit. And I just, I just want to know if that's been understood.
Yeah, you know, I'll have to, I'll have to look into that some more. I mean, when we're doing these calculations, you would be assuming that you're doing a very efficient heat pump, hot water heater, heat pump heating system. And, and so that, but I don't know the answer.
Yeah, so efficiency, I mean, I can insulate my windows and use double panes, but that's sort of secondary. That would help me on the gas side as well, the electric. But if you just take, and if right now I go electric, you know, it seems like my bill would go up considerably. But I just, you know, I just want to, you know, see if, you know, if you guys can, you know, it'd be great to get more information on that because I would like to go to voters. I'd like to go to constituents and say that not only this is good for the environment, but, you know, we see a long term or there's some savings programs or something because that's, you know, we know how the 24 election cycle went around, you know, eggs, and, and right behind it is, is energy and heating costs. So, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions on this? No? Sure.
I was thinking along the same lines as Councilman Paulson. I am a believer in, you know, like people choose and, you know, I like the electric cars, but, you know, if the cost isn't right for somebody because the technology's not there or the infrastructure's not there, people get hybrids, they try to do what's right for them. My concern is also that this is going to be much more expensive, you know, forcing people to, to switch or when, when a heater goes out, they have to change it now and put an electric one in, which, because the technology is less efficient and more expensive. You had mentioned incentives. Are there incentives for replacing them? Are there incentives for your, your future bill? I mean, what have you seen as far as incentives that would make somebody feel, I mean, you don't have to, you know, make money by switching it, but that they're not going to, like, like we said, they're not going to get crushed by trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, there, there are quite a few incentives that are out there. There are incentives, like the County of Marin has incentives through their Electrify Marin program. These are incentives to, you know, rebates for all kinds of appliances, cooktops, water heaters, heating systems, electrical panel upgrades. There are, I think Bayren has incentives. There are incentives at the, from the state as well. I think some of the utilities have incentives. If you go to the, there's a website called The Switches On, and you can just put in your zip code, and it will list all the, all the kinds of incentives and rebates that are available.
Like The Switches On.com?
I think dot com. Yes. So I would recommend looking at that. And, you know, one other comment I want to make about the cost is that, I mean, I'm suffering from the same bill, so I understand what you're talking about. We all are. The changes that we're looking at, I mean, we're not going to be making those kind of changes. This is, this is in the building code, right? Whatever the new building code is saying about what, you know, if you're going to be using, you have to use electric appliances or your energy budget essentially requires that you use an electrical water, hot water heater or heating system. The things that we're looking at would be more like if you're doing a renovation over 500 or 750 square feet, that you're also required, and typically, like the county is already doing this, and they have a checklist of items that you can also, you know, say that you're doing, just kind of, and their energy efficiency, and there's also some electrification options as well. But it could be some, you know, it could be improving the insulation in your home, and it could also be, you know, using, installing a hot, a heat pump hot water heater. So those are the kinds of, we're really looking at kind of fine tuning and I think providing more choice, not less choice or more mandates. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, well, I don't have a question, but maybe for the Climate Action Forum, we could have like an educational meeting on gas versus electric appliances and what the efficiencies might be and the savings.
That'd be good content.
Just to educate people. And I did have a question, though, on the electrification roadmap. What about the permitting process and streamlining some of, you know, if someone wants to replace their appliance? You know, is it, do we make it easy for people or how can we make it easy for people? And is that part of, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's part of the building code, or is that a separate process where we would have to adopt a different permitting process for outside of the building code?
I think the, the permitting process can be very individual for each city. It's not really a building code issue, but there are certain things. First of all, there's fees, so it could be, you know, even just a permanent fee holiday to kind of encourage people to do it. It could be looking at your fees to make sure that doing a hot, a heat pump hot water heater, for example, isn't that more expensive than just switching out and doing a regular natural gas hot water heater? My understanding is that sometimes some jurisdictions will charge for both the electrical feed and, and the, and the plumbing fee as well. So rather than charging two fees, just charging one fee. There can also be like what we've done for solar panels and solar system installations, doing expediting permitting so that there's, so that you can do, fill out your application online, that there can be remote visual inspections, that a installer can even be, you know, approved, kind of preemptively approved so that they don't have to go ahead and get the, get them inspected. So, you know, there's, there's a variety of different ways to streamline those, those permitting processes.
And that's for a different conversation from this resolution, but that could be something we could look at, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to open it to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment or a question about Autumn 8.1 who would like to come up? Hello, Mr. Mahler.
I'm surprised.
No, I'm expecting you to be here. You're the one who teaches us so much.
So I'm David Mahler. I live here in Larkspur. And so I'm going to kind of comment on two, two parts of this. First is about the resolution. So I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the 31 members of the Larkspur Climate Group, and we strongly endorse staff's recommendation that the council adopt the building electrification roadmap. Christine talked about how it was developed, and, but it was really targeted on what is the most impactful actions we can take now to make a difference. It wasn't just anything. It was like really narrowed down to the most impactful actions. And as Christine pointed out, about a quarter of our emissions and what you saw in that graph, we got to hit this, this particular area. It's, it's a big contributor. And I'd like to share that two members of the Larkspur Climate Group were very active in those stakeholder groups and had some, I think, significant impact on this. Now I'm going to switch to some of the questions that came up during the discussion here because I think I have some information that might be helpful in understanding those. First of all, on the Bay Area Air District, Zero NOx Rules that start taking place in January 1st, '27 and then '29. So think about this. An average hot water heater and space heater lasts for about 20 years. That means every year, 5% of each burnout. It'll take 20 years to play out. So when we think about those implementation dates, it's not like that's for everybody on that date. It's going to take 20 years to change out the current fleet of gas, space, and water heaters. So it's kind of a slow, slow implementation, actually. As far as the economic analyses, there was a question, I think, Councilmember Paulson asked about the state economic analyses. And there is a difference here, and this is about the, the cost. In the state analyses, they look at lifecycle costs. So they don't just look at like monthly, you know, beginning installation cost and immediate cost impacts. They look at lifecycle impacts, and they're anticipating the cost of gas is going to continue to go up as fewer and fewer people are supporting the infrastructure to deliver the remaining gas that's getting delivered. So they, they look at it on a lifecycle basis. The other thing that comes into play into your particular calculations, you were talking about five times more expensive than it may be, but from the get-go, heat pumps are three to four times more efficient than gas appliances. So that's going to take a big bite out of that five times greater cost. But it's true that for existing buildings, you're probably going to see your electric power bills go up, not for new buildings, because they're so tight, so efficient, so well-insulated, it's definitely cheaper to electrify than to continue to use gas. The, there were just one or two other things here real quickly, is that many people are working on trying to reduce the electric rates because the reason California's electric rates are so high is there's all these other public benefit programs that get piled onto electric rates. And there's quite a move going on now at the state and at the CPUC to evaluate those add-on costs and see if they're better handled through some other mechanism rather than piling onto electric rates. So it's anticipated, actually, electric rates will go down as some of these societal costs move off. And then finally, I would say, even if it turned out that it costs more to electrify than to continue to use gas, the reason we're making this change is to try and address the climate crisis. We're not just doing it for the heck of it. So it's a societal cost. What is the societal, societal cost of not making these changes? So, I mean, we have to hold those up. On a personal level, yes, it might be more expensive depending on your certain circumstances, but on a societal level, that's why we're doing this. So just to wrap up here, we want to encourage the council to approve the resolution, adopt the roadmap, and follow through on implementing it. It's with, with the other jurisdictions, you're not on your own on this. And finally, I also want to compliment staff on our terrific staff report that accompanied this. It had just such a positive feel to it, and I think that was a very encouraging thing. Many people in the Larkspur Climate Group commented on that. They really picked up on that.
Great.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say you've had a lot of influence on the education of the staff community and all of us up here, so. I'd also like to acknowledge there's about five written comments that are on our website and on our agenda item on the website, so you can read those if you're interested. Anyone else in the chamber have a, interested in commenting or a question? All right, seeing none, I see one hand online, and may I welcome Mr. Holmes? Hello, Mr. Holmes, you're on.
James Holmes, Larkspur. For several reasons, there's good cause to view this roadmap with caution and not follow it completely. A lot has changed since the 2006 legislation and 2022 grand jury report, which this plan is based on. First, cost. Electric rates have skyrocketed 40 to 50% in the last three years. Second, a new federal administration plans to remove mandates and reduce incentives for electrification. Third, the continuing lack of practical, affordable substitutes for gas, water, and room heaters, especially for smaller homes like mine and mobile homes. Fourth, the emerging battery problems like flammability, toxic disposal, and manufacturing costs, both economic and environmental. Fifth, the oft-predicted inadequacy of the electric grid, especially with AI as, and as an emerging competitor for energy. These costs are continually soft-pedaled by those who are advocates for electrification, but evidence of electrification's fading public allure is the plummeting sale of electric cars even before Tesla became unfashionable. The roadmap itself seems a bit of a mishmash. Some items seem practical, like A and C permit, streamlining, and information availability. Other items are outside your municipal scope, like B, low-cost financing, and E, electrification workforce pipelines. Some seem far-fetched and oppressive, like decommissioning gas infrastructure, and some, like partnering with community organizations, seem almost meaninglessly vague. In short, please don't follow this roadmap too closely. It could lead to a dead end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Do I see, are there any other hands raised on the, online? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council. Are there further questions or comments from what the public responses were?
I had a quick question. Maybe Christine, you could, I'm curious, on the roadmap, the, the second item, implement advanced green building and electrification codes, you know, can you say if the Ninth Circuit Court decision, you know, the Berkeley versus the Restaurant Association, how that has changed that path at all? Or, you know, I mean, that's a very broad, you know, advanced green building electrification code. I, you know, I know you've gone into detail. There's a ton of detail, but just in short, you know, that, that decision, you know, did, you know, come up in this chamber a couple times, so.
Right, yeah, no, we're not advocating, or we will not be putting forward an ordinance that requires all electric buildings because of that decision.
Okay.
That was about restaurants. That was about restaurants, right?
No. It was, it was the Restaurant Association that brought the the action forward, but it was actually, it it applies to all all building codes, all all electric building reach codes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so hearing no further conversation of the council members, we have a resolution 1125, which is on in the staff report and available. And if there are further questions, no further questions? Is anybody interested in putting forward a resolution, the resolution 1125?
Well, hang on, before, before we do, I mean, we'll close public comment. Let's have a little, little discussion if we can. Because I'm a little torn on this and I'd like to just kind of hear other people's thoughts on it. The theory of switching from gas to electric, I think, is phenomenal and is good for everyone. The practicality of it, of forcing people to replace their appliances with more expensive, less efficient, you know, methods of getting their gas or of their heat. I'm not that comfortable with that, you know? And I think that's kind of, that's the roadmap that we're talking about is, is, you know, basically the switch from a gas to electric. And I, I, as I, as I mentioned earlier, I I'm a believer that when the technology is there, people will switch because they want to, because it's in their best interest to switch, because it'll be more efficient. And even if it's equally efficient, it'll be better for the environment. But when there's a trade off of doing what's better for the environment at the cost of your personal finance, and some people may not be in the situation where they're able to do that, I'm hesitant to force them to do that. So that's, that's my, my concern.
So I I hear that and I'm thinking it's more incentivized rather than forced. What, where would the forced part be? There's no penalty. I don't understand that there's any penalty should, there, there's going to be a lack of availability for certain appliances, but there's no penalty.
Well, I, my understanding is starting in 2027, they won't be available. So whether you're building a new building or your, your hot water heater goes out, your furnace goes out, you know, you're going to have to switch. And I, and our vote, my understanding is, are we endorsing that? Are we in favor of that? You know, we're signaling, my thought is we're signaling, is this the road that we think is the right road to go down? And I have some concerns about that road. I mean, I think the vision makes sense. I think in 20 years, you know, the technology will be there and everybody's going to be using electric, just like everyone's going to be driving electric cars, you know? But right now, if we were asked, we force everybody to drive an electric car, I'm not sure I agree with that. So that's, that's my concern.
So how would you then? A lot of changes come that are are considered beneficial environmentally, let's say, over the course of of building building codes. For instance, new houses require double pane windows or they require a sprinkler system to help prevent mitigation for fires or new roofing materials that are more fire resistant and they're probably more expensive. Where does, where do we, how does this fit into already existing implementation things that we require for the betterment of the community as a whole?
That is the question. The, the question is, where do we draw the line of what we feel comfortable mandating and what we feel should be in a consumer's interest? And I think for me, as Councilmember Paulson pointed out, if my water heater went out, you know, tomorrow, you know, and the question is, do I replace it with gas or or electric? I'd like to think that I would have that option because based on my particular financial situation, I might say, listen, I would really like to help the environment, but unless somebody's going to, you know, subsidize my monthly payments, I'm just not in the position to do that. And I would feel, it's a little bit different than than buying a house. If you, you know, because they use certain materials, the house is more expensive. You don't have to choose to buy that house, right? But I'm already in my house, I need hot water, I need heat. I'm, anyway, so I, I know that's, we're not voting on that particularly. We're not, it's going to happen. It's in the 2027, 2029, whatever, that's, that's already kind of in the cards outside our jurisdiction. My feeling is our vote is, do we agree with it? What do we signaling? What do we, you know, what do we think is in the best interest of our community? And then I just, I'm struggling with it.
Yeah, I get it.
That's.
Yeah.
And if I, I could, you know, just kind of amplify. I mean, I think everyone sitting on this dais, you know, is aware of greenhouse gas, you know, you know, global warming and all that. The two thoughts, like, you know, David, I thought your, your points were really helpful, but my, my struggle, like, like Scott's, is possibly the familiarity with the numbers. But just to, just to go over some of the things you said, you were saying, you know, gas will get more expensive and electricity will go down. You know, the market forces then would encourage people to make that switch. They wouldn't be mandated, you know, under that assumption. The other thing is, is, you know, the thing that I keep bringing to the climate discussion, which is maybe somewhat unpopular, is the penny wise, pound foolish. So let's just take my case where, you know, we, we only have so much public goodwill and so much public money. If I, you know, I'm paying roughly $200 a year for MWPA and we know that these fires are going to wipe out, you know, it was, I think, the number, the amount of greenhouse gas in the housing sector was 25% of 38%. So whatever, it was about a quarter. If I look at it in metric tons, I know the number is fairly low. The moment we have a fire, it's usually 10 times that. So if I'm in the winter paying 500 a month instead of 100, wouldn't it be better to to double the MWPA money and and, you know, slow down the wildfire than to put it into this and let the market forces, you know, actually allow people? Because I think a lot of people are struggling and and it, you know, it's part of the resistance, you know, we tactically win and strategically lose, you know, that people are saying, you're just driving at my costs. And, you know, that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, I want to support it, but I'd, I'd probably have to have a really close look at the numbers, which I didn't. I'm inclined to vote for this because I really believe we need to, you know, move this topic forward. But, but the struggle is the same and and for reasons that are not against environmentalism, there, there, that trade off and the details in the numbers. You know, we want to win this war and not just win this battle. So anyway, that's where I am.
So maybe the opportunity to really dive into some of these incentive programs that were mentioned, and I don't know if they are income based qualifications, but really dive into what opportunities there are for rebates and and others to meet those challenges for individuals who find that this is an expensive transition for them. But Stephanie, you were going to say something.
I, I definitely think, I definitely hear the concerns about the economics. And I do think that, you know, they need to work for people. And I, I do want to point out that, one, yes, there are incentives to incentivize people to make the switch. Secondly, just speaking as someone who has electrified, the numbers, the efficiency of the new electric appliances are much greater than the gas appliances that they're replacing. And so your, while your costs, while your energy costs may go up slightly, it's not, it's not the five times that you, that you're, that you think it's going to go up. I mean, it's much more, they're, they're just much more efficient. And secondly, I think, you know, just, just the health benefits, which, how do you quantify that? But I just think, you know, the health benefits and also the benefits of reducing overall our community's greenhouse gas emissions, which caused the, the wildfires. It's kind of like this circular reasoning. But, you know, we, we need to start to decrease our emissions. And, and, you know, I, I think 2027 is coming. These rules, these rules are going, they're coming. And so we're just helping people to make that switch sooner. And as Mr. Mahler pointed out, you know, it, it takes time for us as a community to, to switch out the appliances. So it's not like day one, we're going to all of a sudden be able to remove all of the gas appliances. It will take time. And to the extent that we can incentivize people to get ahead of 2027, I think would benefit, would benefit the environment.
I think the city manager had somebody he wanted to bring up.
I would encourage the council to look at page 27 of the plan because that's the actual actions that you would be adopting by adopting the resolution. And they're really guidelines for the council and staff on what you plan to work on. And by adopting the plan tonight, you aren't actually putting us any particularly closer to any sort of mandates that aren't the mandates coming down from the state. What you're doing when you read through that page and the subsequent detail in the next few pages, there's all the detail behind it, is you're really saying, we want the staff to bring us different items so we can make some decisions about whether we want to encourage and incentivize, promote these types of changes. The most difficult one will come if we don't get legislation that stops us is this triggering around remodels. I've talked to all of you offline. I think that's the hardest decision because it's the closest you come to mandating something. But I encourage you to read particularly Councilmember Kenda. I encourage you to look closely at page 27 because I don't feel, I, I think who, I think those who drafted this plan were trying to be thoughtful of the concern you're stating. And I think this page really reflects that.
Is there a way to bring that up or so that others?
Is that, that's the same as the 10 items. It's, it's. Yeah, it's exactly what we read on, on the report. So one through 10, and I was questioning.
It's nicely summarized there. But, you know, if you really read the language, it encourages establish, evaluate, promote. These are not mandates.
These are not mandates or 27.
Page 27 of the report provides you a nice summary of the 10 steps, A through J. And then if you look past that, there's more detailed implementation recommendations.
Well, hold on just a minute, we'll get it up.
And I just think for the staff, this would be very useful because it sort of gives us what the priorities are.
Right.
If you want us to work on.
Sarah, did you have anything you wanted to bring up? Okay. I'm just giving a second for people to catch up on that. It's a lot of material. Okay, any other things that kind of come? I appreciate you expressing that. You know, we really, we really have to look out for all of our constituents and their abilities for some of these mandates that are often difficult for a lot of, of community members to implement and to afford. And I think what we're looking at is a lot of incentivizing forum. But many of the mandates are not going to be, it doesn't seem like they're going to be difficult. I mean, they will be difficult for some, but we can figure out priorities setting. Does that make sense with what I just said? Anything else you think? All right. Anything else staff wants to share other than that particular page has a good eye opportunity now? All right. We do have a resolution. It's 1125, which is listed here. It's a two page, looks like it's a pretty straightforward one that is just requesting that we adopt the county's electrification roadmap.
Okay, I'll move, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 1125, adopting Marin County's, the countywide electrification roadmap published on September 6, 2024.
Is there a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to abstain from the vote.
All right, and abstention, we have one. Thank you. That item number eight point, where are we? Eight point one is finished. That brings us to item number eight point two, Climate Action Forum Progress Update. Welcome again, Miss Assistant City Manager. And there is a handout for this. Am I correct with that?
Yes, we have a very brief presentation for you this evening.
Okay.
Committee and to one, one note on the previous item, I actually can't take credit for the positive staff report. If anyone who's reading other staff reports in the county, that's largely a template that all cities are using, so we have some consistency on this. So the county staff are much more positive, happy than I am. But I like to think I'm effective and passionate, which is what we're talking about.
Oh, the wry irony that we get from Shannon. I love it.
Anyway, so very excited.
So noted, by the way, that you're not the one making this, making the generous comments.
Any positive statements. Okay, but I am very excited to provide an update to the council and the community about our recently established Climate Action Forum. It's going to provide a brief overview for folks who may be tuning in, who haven't followed us on this journey and how we got here. The background is after much deliberation, in February, we passed a resolution creating a Climate Action Forum. We designated Councilmember Margalisa as the liaison and Vice Mayor Andre as the alternate. And the city surveyed the community for what times worked for the Climate Action Forum meetings, the ideas that people can participate in this, that we can really collaborate. So we wanted to make sure that people could show up to the forum. Based on that, we're going to do meetings on the second Wednesdays every other month. Our first one will be April 9th. Our other meetings will be June, August, October. The meetings will be from 6:30 to 8:30 PM and in the council chambers. And there will be a recorded and remote participation option. So folks can tune in, tune in later on Zoom. We published a draft Climate Action Forum agenda for a comment. It's available, we sent it out on Friday, March 14th. And Allison, can we pull up the city, city website to show folks where it is?
I saw it, it's on the main page.
It's at cityoflarksburg.org/climate, too. That's going to be our home for all things sustainability and climate. That's much easier to remember than what the URL actually is. We'll just have it come up here. It's all right.
Shannon, from those meeting dates, do you plan then to report out at a regular basis?
Yeah, so part of what actually, when we had these discussions and when we established the Climate Action Forum on the alternate month, there will be a report from staff to the full body of the city council about what we discussed at the Climate Action Forum, if there are any items that came out of that that staff is working on or anything, any presentations, et cetera. So all of the materials for the, the draft agenda are available right here. Allison, if you could pull up the, the agenda, sorry. You can just go back to the PowerPoint, it's fine. I have faith people will be able to find it.
Yes.
I'll just, I'll just start.
Well, you can keep, yeah, we have the paper here.
So it's going, we're going to introduce everybody. I assume, I expect that a lot of the folks will show up to multiple forums. There'll be a draft mission statement for folks to discuss. We'll also review the Climate Action Plan Implementation Dashboard, which we've created, which is both available in Excel and as a static PDF just to, just to have something that is encased in amber, which what is going to be a dynamic document. Also, we're going to review identified priority climate action plan implementation projects that we can discuss with the community. And then also, which follows up on one of Vice Mayor Andre's comments, we'll be talking more about the countywide electrification roadmap discussion. It will not be a rinse, wash and repeat of the presentation this evening. It'll actually be for folks who've read through the entire document to discuss some of these things that were alluded to about where do we start? Do we start with education? You know, what might be of the most interest to the community? How can our partner agencies, how can activated community members be ambassadors in terms of education for folks to see some of the value of electrification or work with folks who might be in the middle of a remodel or be looking really closely, be on a fixed income and looking at their energy bills? So it'll be a follow up discussion to that.
Can you, can you move to the next slide, Allison? Because that's still the background slide.
Sorry, sorry, once we, I didn't, I, that's, that's on.
There we go.
It's not on Allison, it's on me because we were having.
Okay, this is the goals for the April 9th, which is what you're discussing now. Great, thank you.
And then also in future meetings, this meeting will be doing a lot of groundwork and discussion of what will be the backbone of the forum. But as we, as it continues to evolve, part of the goal is that staff aren't the only folks talking, that there'll be community groups who might want to speak or nonprofits, et cetera. And so we're going to have a process to where community requests to present at a Climate Action Forum. It's just going to be a simple form, how you can get in contact with staff and the liaison to, to get on a future agenda and what the topic would be. So with that, be really positive. I'm very excited for the forums to start. We're soliciting any feedback on this draft agenda. Again, this idea is to be dynamic and involved with our passionate climate community. our passionate climate community. So by next week, if there's anything where there's an addition to an agenda or any questions about some of the documents that are the backbone of the agenda, reach out to me. There's now a climate@cityoflarkspur.org. That's a generic email. And you can also contact me directly or give me a call, and we're looking forward to seeing everybody.
Great, thank you. Are there questions of Assistant City Manager Shannon O'Hare from the council? Thank you for taking this on. Are there questions from the audience in the chambers about this item, the Climate Action Forum? Yes, Mr. Mahler.
David Mahler, Larkspur. Not so much questions, but really glad to see the Climate Action Forum moving forward. This is very, very exciting. It's already been noted. It took a long time to get to this point, and it's just great to see it moving forward. Larkspur Climate Group will certainly be reviewing the materials and will be providing comments and participate in the forum. And I also want to note about this change on the Larkspur website, putting climate sustainability much more prominently on the website. It used to be five layers down. Now it's just two layers down, and it's easy to find. So that, that's a really big thing because when people want to find information, and it's been shown that people trust their local jurisdiction more than anybody else, if it isn't easy to find, then they can't get it. So that's a, that's just a huge change, and I want to comment on that. And then finally, this point about how to deal with people whose income and resources doesn't enable them to sort of jump on the electrification and and make that transition. Key concern at the Air Resources Board, most of the discussion that they had at their most, well, two meetings ago, was around that very issue. And their thinking generally was some combination of income graduated incentives, much bigger incentives for people that need them. And the other thing is waivers, literally saying, you don't need to switch. You know, you don't need to do this based on income qualifications. So I'm just saying, your point, Councilmember Candell, is is a very important one and one that everybody is grappling with. But the question is, do you not move ahead for everybody who could move ahead? Because a relatively small number can't. Is it 20%? Is it 40%? But maybe the 60 or 80 can move ahead. So it's, it's a tough issue. But that's generally how people are kind of looking at that, is graduated incentives and waivers.
Thanks. I look forward to the Climate Committee or Climate Forum helping to educate us further on these matters. Because we're a small jurisdiction, we live within a big pool of the Bay Area where there's a lot of action happening on matters like this that I think, I hope that this forum will be able to educate us on. Any hands in the audience online have a question about this item? I don't see any hands. So Shannon, were you looking for any other feedback or just a presentation on that?
We owe the council and the community an update, so primarily provided an update. And then also, anyone who's interested, please review the materials. We'd love to hear from you. I suspect we'll hear from some folks. But again, the more input, you know, the community gives us, et cetera, the more successful this could be.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, that closes our business items for tonight. We are now adjourned to closed session. We will be coming back after our closed session. If we have any reportable actions, you will hear it at that time. So the primary meeting is adjourned. The screen is blank. Do we need, that's okay. All right. Welcome back. We just finished closed session for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 19, 2025, in which the city council met off the dais. And I would like to ask our city attorney, Sky, to report out on what we discussed.
Thank you. The city council has authorized me to report out that the city is going to continue to monitor the litigation between the California Native Plant Society and the Marin Municipal Water District regarding the district's cycling on trails pilot project. Until that case is concluded and there's a ruling from the court, the city's ordinance prohibiting off-leash dogs at Piper Park will remain in effect. And the city will reevaluate that based on the outcome of the litigation involving the Marin Municipal Water District.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting of March 16, or is that today's date? I've lost track. March 19.
There's, there's no reportable, there's no reportable action on any of the other closed session items.
Is that, are you concluded?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Meeting is adjourned until our April 2 meeting, and that will be a big celebration. So I hope everybody can be here. Good night.